Good evening, Reverend Hattie.
Good evening, Reverend Hattie.
I'd like to call the Northern Division of the Edgecombe County Commissioners to order. Mr. Evans, instructions, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to everyone. I'd like to invite this man with us, our Deputy County Manager, to come up and give us safety instructions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To provide for the safety of those attending this meeting, please listen to the following instructions in case of an emergency. First, please take a moment to note where your exits are. If an emergency arises that prompts us to evacuate, I ask that everyone exit this room in a quick and orderly manner through one of the two exterior doors, one to your right. Once you exit the building, we ask that you safely cross Bramble Street to our parking lot to be safely away from the building. Our staff will provide additional direction and assistance. In the case of a tornado warning, we ask that you exit this room into the hallway, where we will all remain until it is safe to exit. In the event of an active shooter, we ask that you run if there is an accessible escape path and try to evacuate the premises, hide if you can evacuate, and find a place to hide where you are less likely to be found, and lock any doors that you can. And finally, as a last resort, fight only if your life is in imminent danger. Our staff will continue to provide additional direction and assistance on what to do. Thank you for your attention.
Reverend Hattie, prayer, please. You turn, God, I follow. We give thanks for this day. We thank you for your life that you've given us, and we ask that you bless us to be sensible to the needs of our community. Help us to make the right decision that makes our county a better place in which to live through Christ our Lord, we do pray. Amen. You have been, you attended the package minutes from the previous meeting. There are no additions or corrections. There are most simple. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, sign aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Here are none. That's all. Next, Attorney Hattie. The public hearing is called to order. The public hearing is called to order. Mr. Peters, please.
Yes, sir. November 23, 7:00 p.m., in the Jonathan Bell Commission for Envision, Edgecombe County Administration of Building, Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing to receive comments and requests application for CEBG, you know, funding for housing payments within Edgecombe County. The county intends to request $950,000 to rehabilitate slash reconstruct, turn, like a lot of large income companies. The public is invited to provide comments. If you will respond to all written comments within 10 to 100 days, encourage this comment and will make effective efforts to involve historically underutilized businesses and Section 3 individuals and businesses in execution of programming. Persons with disabilities or who are otherwise in need of assistance should contact the person listed below at this venue in advance of the hearing. A combination will be made for all who request assistance with this hearing or public hearing. This information is available in Spanish or any other language if you want to request. Please contact the individual listed below to accommodate your request.
Mr. Evans, comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have a representative here tonight from McDavid and Associates who's working with Ms. Braswell and I and our team on preparing this application. So I'll ask him to come forward. He's going to give an overview of the application we're going to submit. While he's coming, I'll let you know that there will be two actions we'll ask that you take tonight. First being to approve a citizens' participation plan, which a copy of that is at your place. You've seen this before. It talks about the ways that we will inform our citizens about this program, which includes the public hearing that we're having tonight. Also, pending any public comment and your questions, I ask that you will, in separate action, adopt the resolution as presented as well, that would authorize us to submit this application.
Evening. Dave is on. My name is Dave Manio. We're with David Associates. Like they said, the Edgecombe County will be applying for $950,000 grant. They'll be aimed to assist that one line of homeowners, but the Housing Committee was selected together and met and ranked the eligible applicants. The beneficiaries that were selected was from a total of 136 applicants. The top six were ranked, and that was based upon a reconstruction level of assistance that we needed for the homes. So there was top six there. And then the plan is projected to have four homes reconstructed and two more to have standby units in case if there was any issues with the top or being able to receive assistance. And then I would ask that we would be able to approve the citizens' participation plan and approve the resolution. I can read the resolution.
We have one, but we got it. Come as a question.
I have my question. Who said there were 136 applicants? Were these applications from the past, or they just?
Yes. So the city of, I mean, Edgecombe County has homeowners that call in, and they have kept a good record over the last two years. And those are normally aimed at the urgent repair program that Edgecombe County has done in the past, where they were doing properly. And so then we did a very brief evaluation on houses there, also being able to see houses that have substantial needs of repair, highlighted those sections, highlighted those houses to be able to be for further review. And then from there, we did a secondary inspection internally in the houses, and that allowed us to be able to present our findings to the Housing Selection Committee from there. And so with internal and exterior photos of the house, that allows us to select the top six.
Any additional, right after that?
No, as he mentioned, you know, Ms. Braswell, her staff, they calls all the time, people interested in programs like this. Unfortunately, we never get enough funds to address all the needs that we see. You may recall that your previous meeting, you saw a, from the selection committee, the criteria, and there were things like giving priority to elderly applicants, priority to very low income, you had to be low income, but gave priority to very low income households. And also, as he mentioned, it was based on the needs of the homes itself, based on the needs.
Do we try to make sure that we don't put all the money in one area, that we kind of spread it out throughout the county and not have all of it done in one area?
Yes, good question. In fact, one of the criteria for the selection committee was to try to, was based on geographic distribution. So I think you'll see, if the application is approved, that it is a good spread across, not just all in Tarboro and Canita. There's a pretty.
Yes, the cities that I listed is Bellboro, Tarboro, Macklesfield, and Rocky Mountain. Sorry if I miss my notes.
You do.
No comments or questions?
So six people charged $950,000, about 160 people?
So there are four homes that we expect to be able to reconstruct. The other two are alternates, in case for whatever reason, one of those four fall out of the process, another two are.
So you reconstruct the four homes, and $950,000?
Yes.
237. Trying to figure it out.
Trying to figure out if we can get a new house out of it?
Yeah. I would say, yeah.
And that's what this is. So most of these homes are homes that are beyond repair. You can imagine the adage that we get, some need minor repairs, some need substantial rehab referred to it. Some are beyond rehabilitation, that is, the cost of rehabilitating is beyond a certain value threshold. So also part of that administrative cost and things like the cost to have it inspected or the construction monitor.
Relocation assistance during the time period that homeowners are displaced. Some that starts to be able to relocate themselves and their items, and then the monthly fees that come in with that during the demolition process and reconstruction process of the house. So that has to be accounted for.
Are you saying you have to some plan being wired your house?
Yes.
Yes.
Not people living in houses, but should not be.
You know, the goal of these programs, and this is a delicate balance, is to try to address the most severe housing conditions out there. And in that, oftentimes, you'll find homes that you could spend $40,000 during renovations, and it still have significant needs, so you just can't address all of the needs. And so in that case, this program and other programs we've worked with before does allow for, they call it reconstruction, it's basically tearing down and building a new home.
Do they have to pay for it?
No, sir. There is deed restrictions on the home, there's a lien on the house, that they can't sell it for a certain period of time. Amount is forgiven over that period of time. If they sell it within that window of time, they have to pay back all or a portion of the amount that was spent.
So do the citizens already know whose children, or you haven't released that information?
We haven't released it yet. We first have to apply for these funds to make the home.
As part of the application to the state, the homeowners will have to sign agreeing that they want to proceed with the program as intended.
So does the community decide that, I know you said some of their, but I'm for getting more with my money, like more homes that you could really get people in a good situation rather than spending $200,000 on eight and spending half that on eight. You've got to be.
Right. There's, if you don't mind, there's a 70, so with the program, with the state, we've been monitored a few times on there, and they look at about $70,000 per square, I mean, $70 per square foot, but if you exceed over $72,000 to repairs to the house, that's when they start looking at why wasn't this originally suggested to be a reconstruction? And this is one of the few programs that does allow us to be able to do that to one household with a fairly reasonable amount of time, forgiven loan time, with a deed of trust to secure that. But the program idea is to be able to have that homeowner receive that type of level of assistance, and also for them to be able to stay in that home indefinitely afterwards.
What happens to that home should it be for an elderly person who passes away? Okay.
So the deed would travel directly to the next line of error. The only time that there would be any type of recruitment process would be if the deed changed monetarily. So as long as there was no monetary transaction, then there would be no need to have any repayment.
So the heirs can own it as long as they have stuff?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Here are none, as the most of the citizens' participation.
You need to give public.
Public excuse, sorry. Is there anybody from the public that would like to hear this?
Yes.
Who this comes on?
Under Reverend Roosevelt's head, it started a speech, North Carolina, and I don't know whether it's ever in this bit of Mission Harris, but there's a situation that's gone down in Speed, North Carolina, that I would like, I won't call it a family name, but I will talk with the manager about that tomorrow. I would hope that, is there any way that some of that money could be used to address that family that were living in the house and do mishap? They moved out of the house, because I understand that they lived down in Canita now, and they still stand the house. But to me, the situation should have been protected. They got a house built out of group, out of Chapel Hill, out of the 3099, do mishap with some taxes. Somehow, the house got from under them, and they're supposed to start paying rent. And people that built the house, out of Chapel Hill, I understand they came back down and got debt somewhat, so they didn't think it was fair for someone to be paying rent for a house that they built and gave to them. But the family is mentally challenged, and I just feel like there ought to be a some way where people know everything else about the people, if they know that their family is mentally challenged. And this family has a handicapped child that's in the household as well, so it's real bad when you know this at the communal level, but it probably happens more often than what we realize. And I would have to talk to the manager. You may be familiar with it already.
Right. I do ask you all to sit there with Donald, you can be in. Is there anybody interested to come this time?
Good morning, everybody. I heard that there's going to be a modification to the, what do you call it, getting documents proposed.
Well, we don't have records or questions.
Right. I would suggest to save money for the county, that I didn't see it in the document that you posed, that you add that you can send out PDFs instead of paper copies.
And that's another item on the agenda, but send that.
That's, I have one under oath, and it's going to be later on, so I wouldn't be able to speak, so.
You may still be able to speak. This is not, this is not, you still can speak. This is just a public hearing on particular. Is there anybody here to speak? Here and none. Your questions on motion for citizens' participation plan?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I recommend that you approve.
Can we get a motion on citizens' participation plan?
I'm motion to approve.
Question? All in favor, let me know by the votes, sign aye. All opposed? Here and none, the citizens' participation plan is approved. The next, is a motion on resolution, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I recommend that you approve.
We have it for you. We need a motion to, questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, sign aye. All opposed? Here and none, the resolution is approved. At this time, all action taken. I'd like to join the public hearing. The next, Adam on the general, is a public hearing is called to order to receive citizens' comments, whether to a special use permit request from Barnhill Contract Company for property location, that is, language. This is a quasi judicial hearing. Mr. Peters, would you please read the public notice?
Yes, sir. The public notice is hereby given at a public hearing. We can tell about the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County on Monday, November 6, 2023, 7:00 p.m., and Jonathan Bell Commissioner, District for the Second Department of County Administration of Building, 201 San Andrews Street, Tarver, North Carolina, to consider a special use permit request submitted by Barnhill Contracting Company for excavation of sand, clay, and other earth materials. The property is located on NC 33 Northwest, near Ellis Lane, Tarver, North Carolina. Also identified as parcel number 482004630200. Copies of the proposed sand mine are available for public inspection during business hours 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The county planning office, R25, county administration building, 201 San Andrews Street, Tarver, North Carolina. All parties and interested, all interested residents are required to be present and make their use name this the 25th day of October, 2023, by order of the Board of Commissioners of Edgecombe County. Time frame, you will go for a review.
Mr. Evans, come in, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As was just mentioned by Mr. Peters, this is an application for a special use permit for the expansion of an existing sand pit. There is a staff report summary in your packet that we submit that for the record tonight. I do want to highlight, as you see in your packet, that your options for action tonight are of the following. You can choose to either approve the special use and concept plan as presented, or, number two, you can approve a revised special use and concept plan, or the third option is to deny the special use and concept portion. As Mr. Peters mentioned, this is a quasi judicial hearing, and therefore, anyone who speaks tonight will have to be sworn in. I do believe that we have tonight a representative from Barnhill Construction, also Mr. Patina Braswell, our planning director, will be sworn in as well, just in case she's asked questions by me.
If there's anybody who participated in this public hearing, would you please come forward and be sworn in? In order to speak tonight, you have to be sworn in.
If you place your left hand on the bough and raise your eyes. You swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board and facts shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so, God.
Is there anybody else to be sworn in? If you decide you're going to come in, after this, we will free you. At this time, I guess we'll ask for comments, and if comments can please come there.
Good evening, Commissioners. We appreciate you taking the time.
Please take your hand.
My name is Jonathan Proctor. I'm with Barnhill Contracting Company, and on behalf of Barnhill, I appreciate you taking the time to listen to our case for a special use permit. This is a piece of property that we've been just north of for the last 15, 16 years. We are currently mining out toward NC 33, getting to a place where we will need to expand our operation. This pit, just a little background, this pit supplies pretty much exclusively our asphalt plant in Rocky Mount, so this sand goes directly into the production of our asphalt. All the asphalt is made in Rocky Mount, so we are looking to expand it just to get some more, get the next material to make some more asphalt. You know, obviously, there's a particular type of material we've got to use. It's not in every location. We've got to kind of hunt and pick where we can find it. So this, obviously, with us being right there where we are, made sense for us to expand just south of the piece of property that we're actually looking at tonight. We already own and have an existing condition use permit on this well that we got back in 2007, '08 range, so this will just allow us to continuously mine in the same area that we're already being. We have already submitted our application for the mining permit with the state that will regulate all of the erosion control, dust control buffers, in addition to the 100-foot property line buffer that we'll have to abide by with the county ordinance. All of the wetland environmental concerns would be addressed in that permit that we received from the state. So it's in review. I've actually already gotten comments back, and I hope to have the permit by before the end of the month. Could that answer any questions?
Questions off, on the board?
I'm reading the technical review for the edict ordinance. Has we looked into what our environmental health system is concerned for about the second rail section?
So in the actual area of the pit, there obviously are none. This is existing, just agricultural field. With the application that we have for permit, and we have to identify any wells within 1,500 feet, if we find any, we have to survey them, and then there's a monitoring, and there's actually, we have a deepwatering permit that we have to submit data to and all, so we can monitor, make sure there's no drawdown or anything like that. In this particular site, any water that we do pump, we pump internally back into the same pit that we've already excavated, so there's not a lot of pumping and then discharge offsite. Everything is kept on site.
Any other questions, accompany? Mr. Proctor? Here and none? Thank you. Is there anybody else to speak? Is there anybody else to make comments? Thank you. Here and none? Right, it's time for the public hearing. And before this, this application permit, and it's recommended, it's not recommended, it's consideration for approval, is there a motion?
Second.
Questions?
Can we clear that question?
Questions? That motion, in that round, is a surprise, that's all. All in favor, let me know by the votes, sign aye. All opposed? Here and none, especially this man.
And, Mr. Chairman, we have a proposed order.
It's on the board. Also, along with that, is.
I don't think it needs to be approved, second.
Do you think this order needs a motion?
No, I think the motion comes.
Why would you?
That would be voluntary.
We have a proposed approval, especially if we have an order, is there a motion to approve the order? Thank you. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, sign aye. All opposed? Here and none, the order is approved. There's questions, comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. So I'd like to invite Sherri Johnson, our Veteran Services Director. As she's coming, you'll recognize there's a lamp, ring bulb in it just behind you, the front of our building is lit up green, and Ms. Sherri Johnson, our Veteran Services Director, is going to read a resolution and explain why we're doing it.
Good evening. Whereas the rest of Edgecombe County have great admiration and utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have sephiscy served our country and its community in the armed forces and, whereas contributions and sacrifices of men and women who serve in armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedom and way of life enjoyed by our citizens, and whereas Edgecombe County seeks to honor those individuals who have paid a high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for good of all, and whereas veterans continue to serve our community in American Legion, veterans of foreign affairs, religious groups, civil services, and by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help fellow former service members across more than, access more than 52 billion in federal help, disability, and compensation benefits each year. Whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and whereas an estimated 20% increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future, and whereas studies indicate that 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, and whereas military service members transition from military service are at a high risk for suicide during first year after military service, and whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Red Light for its veterans. Whereas the Edgecombe County Board of Commissioners appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel police, specific recognition should be granted.
All eight? The inner veterans in the audience, would you please stand? This is just our way of saying thank you for your service. Thank you so much for the service that you carry. Motion to approve the order. Thank you. Questions? All in favor, let me know by the votes, sign aye. All opposed? Thank you so much. Next, on the.
Next, Mr. Chairman, is Ms. Betty Battle, our ESS Director, is here tonight to give you an update on Medicaid expansion, Mr. Val Stiller.
Good evening. My name is Betty Battle, and I'm the Social Services Director for Edgecombe County, and I'm going to, I have a presentation, there it is, it just popped up, that I'm going to be covering about Medicaid expansion. I also have with me our family-intrigued Medicaid supervisor, Tina Rapp, but she's here to ask any policy questions that might come up about Medicaid expansion. So as we know, Medicaid expansion is effectively December 1st, 2023, will be here in North Carolina, and right now for Edgecombe County, the state is projecting that we are going to have about 3,000, 1,770 citizens that will be eligible for Medicaid expansion, and they're also projecting that about 22,000, no, 2,200 people who are what they call family planning waiver eligible. Those are people that are eligible for family planning waiver, but they don't receive Medicaid. If they get disabled the first, they will automatically roll over and be then receiving Medicaid as well. So you're talking about close to 50, about 5,400 people that we can expect to be eligible for Medicaid come December 1st. Right now, what Edgecombe County has received, and the amount of funds that Edgecombe County has received for Medicaid expansion that we have to have spent by June, June of 30 of 2024, is $261,167. And so they laid. And so they laid out some criteria that we can use for spending money, which includes hiring additional staff, paying for overtime, hiring bonuses, purchasing equipment, improving technology, those are some of just some of the things that we can use to spend this money. After June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, they are supposed to continue to fund this. Even if they do not, counties will still be able to claim reimbursement at the seventy-five, twenty-five. You all, I guess you all know what that means.
You know what I'm saying?
All right. So for all of our Medicaid positions that we have in the agency, the state pays seventy-five percent of the cost. Edgecombe County pays twenty-five percent that we claim reimbursement for on the fifteen-seventy-one. So for all of our positions, the state funds pretty much the positions. Even if they do not continue with the Medicaid expansion dollars, we will still continue with doing the seventy-five, twenty-five. And that's for every Medicaid position, and for our food and nutrition positions, it's fifty percent. People that are eligible for Medicaid expansion will be able to visit the doctor for inpatient, outpatient care, emergency healthcare, mental health, behavioral health, all of those services will be covered through Medicaid expansion. Right now, our behavior health provider is East Point. However, they are in the process of merging with, consolidating with Trillia. Trillia will be taking them over, and at that time, then our behavior health provider will be Trillia. Maternity and postpartum care, mandatory care, each prescription of benefits, they will be able to pay for prescriptions, the maximum cost that it would be for them, it would be four dollars. These are the income limits for people who will be eligible. If you're between the ages of nineteen to sixty-four, and your income is one hundred and thirty-eight percent of the federal poverty level. If you're a single adult, you're a family, a household size of one, then if your annual income is equal to or less than twenty thousand one-twenty, then you would be eligible for Medicaid expansion. Family of two is twenty-seven thousand two fourteen, and I won't go all the way down, but you can see the household income limit set listed for each household. If you are already eligible for Medicaid, you still are, there will be no changes. Non-citizens would be maybe eligible for Medicaid. If they are not eligible for full Medicaid, meaning if they don't have all the required documents, they may be eligible for some form of Medicaid, like if they have to go to the emergency room, then they may be able to receive Medicaid for those purposes. But unless they're fully documented, there's going to be some restrictions on the Medicaid. Okay. You're not going to... To the right. Okay? You okay? I watched the Medicaid call zero. You did not have to pay any monthly premiums for Medicaid. The highest copays I mentioned earlier is four dollars and only required on some services. So the information that you would need to apply for Medicaid is pretty much was listed there. You would have to have your full name, your date of birth, your social security number, or if you're an immigrant, you would need your immigration documents, proof of that you're a resident of North Carolina, and income information that you can get from your pay stub, your W-2, or tax returns. We do verify the information when it's submitted. So we put that information out there just so people know that we do verify all information How do you apply for Medicaid? You can do it in four different ways. You can do it through ePass, which is online, through Edgecombe County NC.gov, or NCDHHS.gov. Either way, you can go and apply for the Medicaid through ePass. You can get an application by visiting our office and, or calling our office, and we will mail you, give you a paper application. How long does it take after you apply? It may take up to forty-five days. It just depends on if you've provided everything that's needed for your application to be processed.
You said forty-five?
Yes, sir. That's if you've provided everything that we need. If you didn't answer all of your questions, or all of the information wasn't provided, then it could take longer because then we would have to reach back out to you, ask you for that information, receive it from you, and process your application. So that will extend the process somewhat.
Good consideration, so.
They can apply now, and can I call Tina up to talk about that?
Yes, because I'm going to open this up to the public too.
Okay.
Because there might be somebody that is interested. Yeah, please go ahead.
So Tina's going to... Okay, so Tina's going to speak about the family planning waiver, and if you apply now, how that affects your application.
Tina Rappert, Family Nutrition Medicaid Supervisor. In order, if you apply today, or tomorrow, or online, if you would apply today, your application date would be November the sixth, or November the seventh. So therefore, if you were approved, you would get family planning program, you would get your family planning for the month of November, and then you would flip December one to the Medicaid expansion, as long as you met the, all the income requirements and all of the other requirements that are required by the state.
Okay, and the family planning?
Okay. The family planning program is a family plan, and it is actually more geared for the, for pregnant women, for the birth control prevention. It helps with, for women, it checks you for breast exams, your annual checkup, and your birth control, choice of method. For men, it does prostate cancer exams, and checks the men and the women for STDs.
Anybody from the public? Got any questions they might want to raise? Probably got some folks here that can ask. Right here.
My name is Sifiu Austin, and I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'm actually the Director of Rassell Memorial Public Library in Rockingham. The state has asked the libraries, and you're allowed to assist ESS with this. And Rassell started December the first, on Fridays, we will be assisting with applications from nine to five. There'll be December and January, there's a palette, we'll see how it goes, and then we'll move, and, you know, you may add more months, you're not sure. But it is something that we need to speak about. I spoke to ESS in Rockingham today as well. They learned a small training for my staff. I have like some, the same slacks and stuff. Kind of like, what do you have? I have to suck on music. So, yeah, so I've been reviewing those videos, and tomorrow morning at eight, I'll be training my staff. I just want to say that if it's okay, that...
Would you mind coming to the microphone so people watching remotely can hear you?
What I wanted to say is that we welcome people to come to Rassell, like I said, starting December the first, on Fridays, from nine to five, to get assistance. But I want to make it very clear, we are not social workers, we are not caseworkers. Everything is kept confidential. We have a computer lab that we do use, we have people spaced out, and I want people to know that. We take this very seriously, we're going to hold everything in confidence, but we're only going to provide the information that they have given us. We don't give our opinions, we don't give advice, we don't do the application for everyone. We just assist them with the website and the navigation of it. And they can start, and they can finish later on. But I came here tonight because I didn't know this subject, because I've been to Nash earlier. Uh-huh. I didn't know this subject was going to be here exactly as well on the agenda, but I know that this information was needed for the citizens of Rassell is here for. I just want to make it clear, Edgecombe County and Nash County, I think people don't understand that. And then I work with all libraries, whether it's the community, the college libraries, we all work together. And we're not the only ones doing it. I had a meeting with the state, North Carolina State Library on October the third, October the fourth, I guess, all public libraries are doing this. The directors have agreed to help the public with this service. And I just want to say thank you. And it's Rassell Memorial Public Library in Rockingham.
Any other questions, the board? Ms. Battle? Go ahead.
Can you tell us the total number of residents currently on Medicaid?
So right now, in Edgecombe County, we have nineteen thousand one hundred and fifty-four citizens that are receiving Medicaid. And we add on the projected one, which is five thousand three hundred and sixty-seven. We expect to see about twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-one citizens to receive Medicaid in Edgecombe County.
Can I have a comment on Medicaid?
Oh, yeah. Right. So I'm getting to that. But yes, we, I know, we are asking, ask the areas to come to, which number is it? Okay, so we're requesting we use the two hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars I mentioned to you all, to use that to get five new positions to assist us, and we went with five because our numbers, and the state gave us the numbers of the anticipated increase. And our number is, like I said, three thousand one hundred and seventy-one youth enrollees, and two thousand plus of the people from the family planning waiver that's going to automatically roll over. I didn't add those numbers in because we don't have to touch those cases. So December the first, the two thousand and some of family planning waiver citizens that are receiving that will automatically roll over. Our staff won't have to touch those cases according to what the state is telling us right now. So we're only anticipating, having to bring in five new people for those three thousand cases. The family planning waiver that Tina mentioned is kind of weird, it's state policy, not ours, because, you know, we have people that are seventy years old that call up and say, why am I getting family planning? I don't need, you know, seventy years old, I'm not going to have any more children. But it is a requirement of the state. But it turned out to be a good thing because now all of those people are going to automatically roll over Medicaid expansion.
The only other thing I have is the four types of, um, one of the others, is, I mean, I'm Tina, health insurance. Health insurance, welfare, UnitedHealthcare, and Ameri... America. Those are the four different. They're PPC brokers. They're called PPC brokers where they manage your doctor visits and things like that. And then some of the brokers have other things that help the citizens of Edgecombe County and other counties, that they do specifically through that broker. And we're told that, you know, we can't, we can't, as caseworkers, we can't advise which broker to choose. We have to give them the number, and they have to call and talk to the broker itself about what their situation is and what they may, may, may or may not need. Because if you have a child who is, who has a lot of health issues and a lot of behavioral issues, they may go, they may not be eligible for a broker, they may have to stay at Medicaid Direct, which is just a regular Medicaid card, the gray card that they get in the mail. And we, as social services, we can issue those cards out. We cannot issue any of the broker cards out to the client. Once the client calls and they're on the broker, we just have to give them that broker number, and they have to do everything.
And once you make the application, you will then choose your broker. If you do not choose your broker, they will choose one for you, and you have ninety days to change. So if you go in and you don't know who you want out of the four, the state will automatically assign it to Medicaid expansion. And you have ninety days to make that change. You can change your broker, you can change your provider. I think that's pretty much it.
What's your name?
Okay. If you have any more, I have no way to talk about it. Talk about how long it takes, what happens once you're approved. If you're still not eligible for the Medicaid expansion, you still have your fourth care act, you're able to go and apply for there. So there are still other options for people that may not be eligible for the Medicaid expansion.
Any questions for the board? Go ahead.
I just, I wanted to, you said there will be twenty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-one people in Edgecombe County on Medicaid expansion?
Uh-huh.
That's fifty-one percent of our population.
I know, yeah, it is. But I'm not really surprised, not really, because health insurance is so, it's so high, a lot of people can't even afford it. People that are working, you know, health insurance eats up a large portion of their paycheck. So you think about the people that are making twenty thousand dollars a year, they're not looking at health insurance and they can't afford it.
I just wanted to reiterate that.
I understand.
And I heard what you said, and then I did the math, took it into a percentage.
I remember you telling me that our numbers were down to like forty-eight thousand something, and I said the same thing when I did the math, I went, that is almost half of it.
It's fifty point seven percent of our population.
Any other, anybody else? Got a question? Yes, sir.
Just a comment. You have, you said you have adding three thousand people, and you need five workers?
That's all we ask for, because of the amount of money that we get.
About one or six hundred?
Yeah, maybe six hundred. We got working now, and she carries fifteen hundred cases herself as a supervisor because of her vacancy, so all of them, you know, we got the five that we're asking for, but we also have to talk about logistics, like where are you going to put them at? Or, you know, there are a lot of things that go along with that, but yes, that's all that is fine. We were like, no. Thank you.
So just a follow-up to that, as Ms. Battle mentioned, recommending adding the five positions. So I plan to approve adding those five positions. We will be bringing back to you a budget amendment that will incorporate additional funds we receive in anticipated, that is, the startup fund you mentioned, two hundred and some thousand, in the anticipated additional revenue, where that's seventy-five percent of those costs for those five. So, you know, anyone who's may have qualifications for income made as caseworker or partner of social services, please direct.
Any other comments? There are none? I'm sure there are.
Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Antoine Brown, our Emergency Services Director, to come to the podium. He's going to be joined by Mr. Jonathan Langley, who's our, who's the chief of South Edgecombe Volunteer Fire Department. It was brought, this will have been brought to our attention, I believe, in our last meeting, concern about issue or response out in the district. So we thought that this will be a good opportunity for Mr. Brown to, first of all, talk about in more general terms, relationship between the county, our volunteer fire departments, typical way things work when a call is, call goes out, mutual aid, those types of things. And then Mr. Langley is going to talk some about his department, he's one of fourteen departments in the county, and be happy to answer any questions you might have about that situation or anything else that they present. So first, Mr. Brown.
All right. Good evening. I'll jump right in, I prepared a presentation here to kind of guide us through some of the topics we need to cover. Like Eric said, of course, the Rosen responsibilities, and we'll talk about contractual agreements that are in place that help us really monitor and make sure, and we'll stewards of what we do here and continue to support. All right. So again, we are, we do have protection, as we've announced, about about fourteen volunteer departments, and then we have three municipal departments, the city of Rocky Mount, town of Tarboro, and the town of Pine Hawks. Some of this information I'll try to push through because Chief is going to redundancy, he's going to kind of come back and talk about some of it, but it's a couple of points I want to make sure we hit in my presentation. Of course, all of Edgecombe County, we're mandated, we have to provide fire protection. The way we do that, right, is in municipalities, or the towns, or the cities, and in the other areas outside of those are covered typically by volunteer fire departments. As you'll see, some of the staffs will be pushed out across the nation, we see that many, much of our protection is provided by volunteer departments. So this is not something that is new. Of course, most of our, in Edgecombe County, all of our fire departments, of course, provide fire response, primarily, right, extrusion fire response, but they also respond to medical calls, they do community risk reduction, which is getting out in the community, doing other PR events, provide fire prevention moments last month, so of course, they were extremely active in that, pass map traffic, accident, gas leaks, and of course, outside fires. And so what you will see in my presentation and achieves is that although fire is their primary thing, they engage in many other aspects as well. Right here, this is a fire protection contract, and so I know a couple of meetings ago, I made a comment, and I said that the... And so, I know a couple of meetings ago, I made a comment and I said that the volunteer service is not what it used to be. And my point in saying that is that, you know, people aren't as apt to volunteer in the fire service. I've been a volunteer for about twelve, thirteen years. I started straight out of high school. I enjoy, you know, getting on the fire truck, responding to calls, helping those that are in need. Um, and I don't know, people have gotten kind of busy. Other priorities have happened. I'm not really sure. The interest has kind of dropped down. And again, we see that locally, but we also see that nationally as well. And Chief, I won't steal his thunder with some of his presentation. But from our seat at the county, it's our responsibility to make sure that we stand ready to respond in the event that is necessary. And so, all of our departments, they have a biannual agreement that they sign. Also, typically, it's the fire chief and it's the board, their board of directors, their chair that signs, as well as county manager signs as well. And it pretty much is a governing document, right, that allows us to monitor, you know, their performance and make sure that they're meeting standards as far as when a call comes out, that they're able to respond. And so, in this instance, and I kind of cut a few pieces of the contract, but it's really available at our office and I'm happy to email it over to you if you'd like it. But essentially, what this is doing is that anytime we have calls come out, right, in our, in our office or in the volunteer fire departments, when they're toned out, we typically are notified as well, particularly if there is a no response or delayed response. Uh, what we do see in the county is during the day, of course, most of the volunteers are working. Volunteer fire departments primarily started from like farmers in different communities seeing the need for fire protection or community activists seeing the need for fire protection. And a lot of them are really kind of funding the fire service themselves, their own dollars, kind of protecting their communities from fire. Of course, that's evolved over time. We moved to now individual districts having a fire tax to support the local departments now to be able to operate. Um, what you do see here is, is in this, so we, at the county level, we monitor the departments, um, their responses to calls, any type of calls. We monitor their training hours. We monitor their ability to respond within nine minutes, of course, is up here as well. And their roster, right, having an adequate number of people on the roster to be able to support themselves on the fire scene. This next slide again is a lot of the departments, all of the departments in Edgecombe County. Uh, we have interlocal agreements, if you will, that the departments all choose to work together to support each other. Um, and so, it's not common, it is common, excuse me, that if you have a call in a local district that you're probably going to get three of the surrounding fire districts to respond with them. Uh, for example, if you have a fire call that comes out in Princeville, you will have Speed, Canita, and South Edgecombe come as well. And it's not because Princeville can't get there. We recognize that. It takes a lot of people to run a fire scene and to extinguish a fire, and a lot of manpower. And so, to make that happen, that there's automatic aid agreements. When we say automatic aid, that means that they're automatically punched initially when the call comes out. Um, I do have here the communications director, Mike Tackness, on the nine-one-one center. And a couple of other fire chiefs here just came just to come and show their support because we recognize that this is important, right? This is a top priority to protect lives and property. And so, we want to, we take it very seriously. And so, to be able to speak to this, we definitely want to be able to support. So, all of the departments in Edgecombe County, definitely, they kind of come together. They agree to, to work together. This specifically kind of speaks to what the non-primary department would bring or their commitment to the other department anytime a call comes out. And this is primarily for structural response, but it also goes along with any other type of call, whether it be a outside fire or a traffic accident in the area. Um, so, before I pass it off to Chief Langley, again, like I talked before, we are seeing a decline in the volunteer service membership, not only locally, but nationally. Um, I believe you all have some statistics or a handout from the National Volunteer Fire Council that kind of talks about it over time. But I think it's at least worth saying that our local departments have been really doing a great job with continuing to maintain a competitive service considering what we, what we're seeing with the decline of membership. And so, my point in saying that, hey, we're seeing a decline is really to motivate and promote all of our community partners and stakeholders to continue to support their local volunteer fire departments. Everybody can't fight fire or pull hoses or join an active membership, but they can be involved and attend, you know, their department meetings. Edgecombe County, we have a public safety association that encompasses all of our local fire departments, municipalities as well, law enforcement and EMS, forestry, power control, multiple entities are there. And these are exactly the things that we talk about quarterly at these meetings so that we stay ahead of where the national decline is kind of headed. So, our current posture moving forward from our office is to continue to monitor and support our local fire departments, uh, to continue the work they are doing. As incidents arise, we always investigate them. First and foremost, uh, the chiefs are contacting directly if there are concerns or things that come up or we need more clarification. And they work very diligently with us to provide that information. It's very minimal that we have those conversations. Uh, but again, of course, because we have these agreements in place with them, uh, we continue to hold that compliance piece to make sure that they are meeting standards. And if we do see that we get to a place where a department is low performing or not meeting standard, then we are in a position ahead of time to support them as best we can and provide strategies and resources. But if it continues to decline, then we know that we're going to have to step in with a plan to be able to continue fire protection services in whatever respective district that is.
Next?
Yep. Good evening. I'm Jonathan Langley. I'm the fire chief for South Edgecombe Volunteer Fire Department. I've got my presentation put together as well. Just to be honest, I'd like to cover a moment. So, I'm here to respond to the concern about the county commissioners in reference to the response that we had and also to educate, provide information about the volunteer fire departments and where we're currently at. I like to give real numbers the best I can. A lot of my information came from the volunteer fire council. So, that's where we pulled a lot of from. As far as the incident, it was a grass fire, dispatch, that's a grass fire, on EC one twenty-four west on August eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three. Our station is Station Fourteen, South Edgecombe, was dispatched. We had personnel that responded, either privately on vehicles. Um, and after five minutes, we have a policy in place through the county, as he was talking about, that after five minutes, if they do not get, if the dispatch does not get a response from one of our members saying, "We're en route, we're on scene," they dispatch the next closest department, uh, which happened to be Station Thirteen, which is Michael's Field. Uh, so, after that five-minute lapse of time, Station Thirteen was dispatched. And Bakers Town, as was mentioned, came also, but they came probably forty-five minutes or so into the incident and at the request of a on-scene incident commander. Some of the things that I'd like to talk about is the standard operating procedures that we have in place for when we do have those limited staff occurrences. Uh, doesn't happen a whole lot, but it does happen every now and then. But the safety that I want to give the community and our commissioners as well is there's a plan in place for when it does happen. There are things that we have, as the fire chiefs of Edgecombe County and emergency management has put in place to take care of those incidents when you have a department that may not have adequate person aid. Um, and so, that procedure actually worked the way that it was intended to that particular night. Uh, this incident happened on a Friday night. It was around six, six-thirty in the evening. And the incident actually lasted to a good way after midnight. So, it was a pretty long drawn-out incident. Um, just to talk about the response schedule for that particular area. Station Fourteen's the primary end district for South Edgecombe. Michael's Field would be second end. West Edgecombe and Lewis Community would be the third and fourth. We have a four department response for every area of our district. And it depends on what area it is, which departments go. But that was the response schedule for that particular district. Uh, we talked about Bakers Town. Bakers Town is on Station Thirteen's response schedule and they run close in to the Wilson County line. Uh, actually, I had an incident this afternoon where Michael's Field went into Wilson County to assist them with a truck for fire and a grass fire. Uh, so, it's a common thing for us to cross the county line, be able to help each other, right? Um, and as a fire chief, I will say, I don't condone us not getting a truck en route. I'm not here to really defend that because there's no excuse for it. Um, I could sit and blame it on staffing. There's a lot of things I could blame it on. But reality is, the public expects us to show up and we fail to do so. So, I'll own that as a fire chief. Um, but what I will say is that I don't condone it, but it does happen. And when it does happen, the policy worked the way that it should have. Uh, that particular incident ended up being a gas leak, an underground LP cylinder. Uh, so, the best course of action was to let it burn until the gas department could get on scene and get it taken care of. They end up opting to burn, burn the tank off, burn all the fuel out of the tank that night. So, they rerouted it and we stood by basically for the length of that incident while they burned it off and got everything controlled. Um, so, I will ask if you have any questions on that incident. I'll be more than happy to answer them. But if not, I'm going to move forward.
Any questions?
I got one quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, you're telling me Station Thirteen responded after five minutes with an apparatus or not?
No, sir. They actually responded, they, one of their officers checked en route and they had an additional timeout at ten minute mark at the request of the incident commander that was on scene with ready.
I mean, I was involved in quite a lot of that here and I agree and understand everything you're saying. I would assume why that people responded if y'all didn't respond with an apparatus.
So...
That same part of the lack of personnel on Friday night did that?
It is. Um, and the gentleman that actually checked in route lives a little closer to that area. So, he didn't drive back to the station to get apparatus. Um, I live locally in that area also and truthfully, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have drove all the way to Pine Tops to get apparatus. I went to the scene to start doing what I could do and then requesting resources as necessary. Um, again, not best practice, but we try to look out for each other in the different areas. We know where our volunteers live. So, um, so we try to look out for each other in that aspect to keep us from having to drive so far, but also get people on scene with them. Um, and we don't always hear, as far as dispatch, they don't always catch our members checking on scene because they don't all have radios. Um, just your officers are going to be the ones with radios and then we have radios on the trucks once they get there. Any other questions? Okay. Uh, so, I'm going to cover a few, um, national statistics. I guess it's... I wonder where I'm supposed to be pointing. So, across the nation, we have twenty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-two departments nationwide. Eighteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-three are all volunteer departments. They don't have any paid staff. They get no monetary recovery. There's five thousand three hundred and thirty-five that are mostly volunteer. That means they probably have some sort of paid staff Monday through Friday or maybe one or two days a week, something of that sort. You have two thousand four hundred and fifty-nine that are mostly career. That would be your departments that are similar to Tarboro, that they have a career paid guys there, but they are supplemented by volunteers. And then there's two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five that are all career departments. In other words, they don't have any volunteers. Everybody is paid members. In two thousand eighteen, seven hundred and forty-five thousand volunteer firefighters were reported in North Carolina, or across the nation, excuse me. That's twenty-eight volunteer firefighters per department on average. Um, the total calls that were run across the nation was thirty-six million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred. Uh, you can see in two thousand nineteen, the volunteers started to drop off. It dropped down to seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred volunteer firefighters across the nation. That dropped that average number down to twenty-seven. And then the call volume went up in two thousand nineteen to thirty-seven million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand. In two thousand twenty, you see our numbers dropped again. If we all remember what happened in two thousand twenty, COVID hit. A lot of people got scared when COVID hit and we run medical calls in the volunteer fire service just as well as any other, uh, any other emergency, medical things. We run those type of calls. So, there were people that got scared of it and they completely got out. They said, "I don't have to be here." So, they walked away from it. Um, you got twenty-five people on average per department across the nation. And when I say on average, they, that means you could have some departments that had forty, forty-five members. But on the flip side of that, you have some that may not have a fourteen, fifteen. Um, and then the call volume dropped a little bit in two thousand twenty because we kind of reined back on running the medical calls. We let you mess handle that. And that was by design. Our county actually did that. Volunteers put running medical calls across the board during COVID to protect and give that reserve in case we did have fires or other types of emergencies. So, our numbers across the nation are actually declining on a regular basis and a regular rate. The two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two numbers have not come out yet. Um, in Edgecombe County, and I'll speak to this specifically, you heard there's fourteen departments that receive funding from our tax, our fire tax in Edgecombe County. We have three departments that are municipalities for a total of seventeen. Rocky Mount, Tarboro, and Pine Tops are not funded through the county fire tax. They're funded through municipalities. You have Sharpsburg, Vatterburg, Sharp Point, Woodickers, and Fountain that receive funding from Edgecombe County, but they're not actually considered Edgecombe County departments. These are departments that are, that maybe have their stations in Nash County, but they're close enough to the line to run with us and have areas in our district. Then you have Hartseas, Principal's, Speed, South Edgecombe, Michael's Field, Leggett, West Edgecombe, Lewis Community, and Canita that are all funded through our, through our fire tax. So, there's twelve OSFM-registered Edgecombe County fire departments. The ones that are all volunteer include Michael's Field, Canita, Speed, Leggett, Lewis, and Pine Tops. That means they don't, they don't have any paid staff during the day. They don't have anybody that helps out other than their volunteers. They're completely supported by volunteers. Our mostly volunteer departments are West Edgecombe, South Edgecombe, Principal's, and Hartseas. West Edgecombe has a program. They run, they run paid staff, one person per day, Monday through Friday, eight to five. South Edgecombe is in a similar situation. We run one person Monday through Friday, eight to five. I think Principal's department, if I'm not mistaken, has a three-day where they have two people, three days out of the week. And then Hartseas program, I'm not a hundred percent sure on what they're actually doing, uh, but they, they have some sort of paid staff all along throughout the course. And then you have your other two departments that you see there at the bottom. So, out of our mostly volunteer departments, I want to give you the numbers of where we're really at. Uh, West Edgecombe has two stations. They have a primary station and a substation. They have thirty-seven members on their roster. One thing that I want you to remember about these roster numbers is it includes your auxiliary members, which are non-interior firefighters, and it also includes the junior members. These numbers are pulled through the county's Perkins Comp, uh, forms. So, Michael's Field has one station with nineteen members. South Edgecombe has two stations with thirty-eight members. I can attest to where we're currently at because of my involvement. We have five paid staff members that are counted in that thirty-eight. We have two, actually, twenty-two volunteers, five junior members, and six auxiliary members. So, you're talking about a weekend or after eight to five, Monday through Friday. We have twenty-two volunteers that are ready to respond. The thing about that that I want to speak on too is of those twenty-two volunteers, we have twelve that work in some sort of form of emergency services, whether it be fire, police, or EMS or emergency management. There's twelve of us that actually work some sort of shift work. Uh, Canita has one station with twenty-three members. Speed, one station with thirty-two members. Principal has one station with twenty-six members. Uh, Leggett has one station with thirty-two members. Hartseas, one station with twenty-eight. Lewis Community, one station with twenty-five. And Pine Tops, one station with thirty members. Okay? So, that leaves us two hundred and eighty-one total roster members, serving forty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine residents in Edgecombe County. That's one firefighter for every one hundred and seventy-two people. Uh, that, that's a task. Um, you have a hundred and fifty-nine of those firefighters that are actually certified to go interior and firefight. Um, I said everybody has a place, but fifty-six point five percent is what you have that can actually firefight. Uh, that's one interior firefighter for every two hundred and fifty-five people in Edgecombe County. We talked about drivers. There's a lot of certifications that you got to have to firefight and to drive these apparatus and things. We have a hundred and ninety drivers according to our fire chiefs. Uh, but this includes our smaller vehicles, our brush trucks and those things that pretty well anybody can drive and the larger apparatus that you may have to have special training to be able to drive. That's sixty-seven point six. But the thing to look at in that is many of those people that are able to drive those apparatus are also that hundred and fifty-nine interior firefighters. We also, of that two hundred and eighty-one, have nineteen that are enrolled in multiple departments. Um, I want to look at our age for a few minutes. So, I was able to pull the stats on two hundred and thirty-seven of that two hundred and eighty-one members. Five percent are juniors. Thirty-five percent of our firefighters... 5% are juniors, 35% of our firefighters are 18 to 30 years old, 19% are 31 to 40 years old, 41 to 50 year olds is 17%, 51 to 60 year olds is 14%, and 60 plus year olds is 10%. We still have some departments that are recording that they have people in their late 70s, early 80s, they're, they're still rostering as interior fire departments, which is almost unheard of. But that's where we're at. Not many of them, but we do have some. So our recruitment and retention challenges, this is where the rubber meets the razor, where we can actually say, what can we do to fix things? So time demands. Family, work, school, college, sports, and other clubs, that's what's taken away from your, from your local fire, volunteer fire departments. You have training requirements, call volume, changing the nature of the business. And when I talk about that, it's rising costs and abuse of services by the public. Running the multiple EMS incidents for stunk toes and things like that, it, it takes its toll on the volunteers. And then greater public expectation of fire response and our capabilities. Mr. Brown actually spoke of how many different things we've been involved in. It's not just firefighting anymore. It's ASMAT, it's EMS, it's, it's a lot more to it than in what it used to be. The change in sociological conditions, leadership problems, aging communities, and then internal confidence. Those are the things that we face when we talk about recruitment and retention. And I want to speak specifically on the three that are highlighted. So what can we do? Our changes in sociological conditions, the recruitment takes time. Let's be real, we're already volunteers and spending more time doing recruitment, uh, it, it's tough. It takes money to be able to put the things together and that takes money from our actual firefighting capabilities. And it puts more stress on our department members. It's a necessity, but only a limited number of people actually believe enough in recruitment and, and looking into this stuff to get involved in. So of those 22, you, that I have in my department, you might have five or six that actually believe enough in recruitment to show up and help with things. They'll show up to the fires, but they're not going to show up to the recruitment events. And, and that's not saying anything bad about them. They have obligations at home and working everywhere else too. So what we're currently doing for South Edgecombe in recruitment aspects is word of mouth. That's our, that's one of our best tools. Walking in, getting to know somebody, say, hey, are you interested in joining a volunteer fire department? It's a good place to hang out, will teach you some things that are going to help you in life, especially younger folks. It will teach you things that will help you. And, and that word of mouth is a great tool. We, we focus on parades. We do a couple of parades throughout the year. We have career days that we go to with, at the local schools. We put signs out in front of the stations. We do social media outreach. And, and we currently have planned involvement in the public safety program that's getting up and going to Southwest Edgecombe High School. That's going to be a great tool for us. We've actually got a couple of junior members that have done it recently because of that program that's starting up. So what we need, um, from a volunteer fire department standpoint is we need our communities to get involved and help us out. We need help in recruitment and retention. We need people to encourage their younger family members to get involved, to, to take some pride and ownership in your community and where you actually live and step up and say, I want this to be a better place and this is the way that I can do it. So there's a place for everybody. And so we're looking for people to get involved. So when I talk about our training requirements and the change in the nature of the business, our stations, equipment, training, we need to focus more on quality rather than quantity. This is going to help with retention because people won't stay at an apartment where they can't go and learn, and they won't stay where they don't have the appropriate equipment to do the job correctly. In, in Edgecombe County, we currently have three Officer State Fire Marshals, OSFM, that are approved training facilities. That's almost, um, it's one of those places, we have to have a asset, we can go and train. Sitting in front of a computer screen is not going to work anymore. Being able to go out and burn houses like we used to is almost unheard of because of all the requirements that's been placed on us. So we're developing these training facilities. You've probably been down 258, seen big Conex boxes, or been through Tarver and seen their Conex boxes, but all of these training facilities are being built. The association has decided to, you talked, heard Mr. Brown talk about our association. We've decided to conduct four countywide trainings a year where we get all the departments in Edgecombe County together and we train together four times a year. And that's hosted at one of these facilities so we're able to get good quality training. Then you have, um, cost, that's always a factor. And I'm not one to sit and talk about money a whole lot, but you can see here that apparatus costs are above $600,000. Y'all agreed to purchase a fire truck through the county not too long ago, right at $600,000 and a little more. The truck that you see pictured in the top is a 2009. That's our newest truck in the fleet at South Edgecombe, and we purchased it for $272,000 in 2009. So that's the difference in what the cost has gone up to. And then gear and all of the other equipment that we have is going up too. We, we reach out, we do grants through the state, we do grants through, uh, other, other agencies to help kind of fund this stuff, but it's tough. Driving those grants takes time and again, it's a volunteer organization, so it takes So what can you do from, as a commissioner's standpoint, as a community's standpoint? You can get involved. Ask your local departments about volunteering. Is there something you can, there's something you can do regardless of your age. We have auxiliary members, we have junior membership, we need people to, to train these younger people. And it doesn't necessarily just have to be in firefighting. They need trained in business aspects, they, because the, the volunteer fire departments are businesses now. It's not like it used to be where it was billed, it was, it's not that way. We run them, we do businesses. And so we need the help with training in those aspects for people coming up. Learn your local fire department and its needs. They have regular meetings, training events, find out when they are and show up. Ask them. Hey, hey, what do you got going on? How, how do you handle this type of incident? What, what do you do in this situation? You can ask those questions and any of them should be able to answer. If not, they can point you in the right direction. And then ask what projects they currently have going on. South Edgecombe is known for the, uh, for the tractor pull. We, we've done that for many, many, many years. The, um, the ability to continue to do that is based off the community involved. Those fundraisers aren't like they used to be. It takes months of preparation to put those things together. We have, uh, and I'll speak to us because that's, again, what I know, is South Edgecombe has board meetings monthly, and we have regular department meets on the first Thursday of every month at 7:00 PM. We have other training events throughout the month, but if you want to come to South Edgecombe and learn what we're about and how we operate and how we do things, I welcome you to it. And, and will answer and ask any questions. If you have any other questions or concerns, I'll be happy to answer them. If I'm able, you can contact me by the email, southedgecomefire.com, if you have questions that you may think of later on that you won't answer. I'll be happy to answer any of them that I can. Again, I thank you for your time and for listening to me. If you have any questions now, I'll answer them best that I can. Any questions?
I just don't think I know what to comment. The presentation is educational to me, okay, in terms of what you're actually doing. And I think, just thank the volunteer, um, staff and, and I guess in terms of what the county can do with it, I think you all that are in the progress along with Mr. Brown, you know, some things that they're not going to suggest to us in terms of those things. And we've certainly looked at the paper, but because, you know, um, you know, I've always been curious about what fire department, even fire department, would ever even been active in it. I had talked to Mr. Brown when we first got appointed in terms of, uh, we need some type of youth program in all of our schools, okay? And so that we can, uh, just, just get them, uh, I, I know that they are feeder programs to our professional fire departments, okay? They come trained, uh, almost trained, they might have to do some different training for other departments, but I, I certainly support those efforts in terms of anything that our boy can do because, uh, we do ask you, you do volunteer for that service and a lot of the public understands this, some of the insurance rates they get because of that. Thank you so much, Father. Thank you for the volunteer.
Mr. Lee, may I make some comments? I, I just want to commend Mr. Brown. Mr. Lane, Mr. Lane, who gave me a call. I guess I'm a part of the fact of his presentation, but, uh, Mr. Lane, thank you so much. We appreciate your response. And, uh, you know, as a commissioner, when I have a concerned citizen, I did my part, doing your part, and we all do. Thank you.
Thank you. And we better understand your part. I think it is understanding how, how it works. Thank you. Who don't?
So, Mr. Chairman, next we have with us tonight, Mr. Sherrod Knox. He's with an organization called When People Work. And they do good work, uh, to assist people who are justice impacted. And, and in fact, they've done some work, most specifically with our sheriff's office, and Mr. Knox will share with you more about the work of them.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sherrod Knox. This is Ray, and you've been our lovely program director. She's going to give you all the copy of the presentation. Does everyone again, getting invited to Sherrod Knox, When People Work? When People Work is a company that's a community group that started with, when they started working, then, uh, for about 10 years now. We run a variety of programs in New York, as well as Maine, New Hampshire, and kind of what I've been tasked with in North Carolina lately, is to take kind of the best of what they've learned over the past decade with right here and kind of create an integrated approach here for North Carolina. So what we offer is seminars and services for integrated, um, integrative, uh, reentry. So they are housing, job training, job placement, uh, mental health, education, uh, regular health, anything, if you're familiar with the term, the public determinants, anything that would fit into that, um, kind of service that we provide. And where we are different, a little unique to other reentry programs, is that we are an all-inclusive program. We're not, we don't have all these services side by side. You probably, you sign up for us and, um, the job training person works with the housing person. And so that way, it's not, you're signing up for seven different programs, you're signing up for one program, and all of that is together with us. We've existed in North Carolina now for about a year, and we've been able to collect some really good data about where that program, our program is running. I'm happy to tell you, we work very well with the Edgecombe County Sheriff here. Uh, I, I wish that every sheriff's office that we work with was as easy and fantastic work with and working out here. In our program over the last year, we had about, I think it's about 200 people who are in the jails waiting to come out, about 75 people, I think is the latest number, of people active in our program, uh, with only three people who participate in it. So we, we know, we're able to see that running this program here, um, really successful, really helpful. I'll tell you the, the one thing that, as I got a chance to speak to Mr. Evans, like, the one thing as I get to this point is like, people are kind of wondering kind of what costs, what, what, how do we do this, and how are we able to bring all of these services to your area? We're able to do this through a unique public private partnership of a paper success track. There are, kind of, in North Carolina, right now, but there are multiple examples federally and in other states as well. The way it works is we have, are backed by our private funder, Make Home Capital, they're all through Goldman Sachs. And what they do is they fund, uh, programs like this to help the community that's lived in their entire existence, is to fund organizations like this. The way they do it is they, anything that we need, so anything from, uh, we're partnering in Wilson County, for instance, building, helping to rebuild a partner top Lexor income people, all the way to, uh, caseworkers that rent people and help them out. And what they do is they agree to fund us fully for five years. And on the front of that, what happens is we, as we need to have government partners that have to, you know, they have to have, the government partners are there for purposes. One is for data collection, the data, that type of thing. We manage to do that through your sheriffs, um, and so we, we have the basic data. The second thing is, um, it's called pay to success, because if our program doesn't work, we don't continue to exist, and we're constantly evaluated by them. Each person that comes to our program is into the computer system, everything from doctor's appointments, uh, job, training, interviews, anything else like that, each of those things are back there. So what we, what we do is at the end of the five years, we turn back to you all. Well, the agreement is arranged up in, for you guys, so it's no surprise, costs are even less than the debt, but, um, we turn back and we evaluate how successful the program is. As the, the program has saved you all some money, we ask for a portion of that back to keep the program running. So say, for instance, we saved you 100 bucks, uh, we asked for like about 30, 40 bucks to keep the program running. Same North Carolina tells us it costs about 50 to 54,000 dollars for a difficult facility per person per year to keep a person in North Carolina. So our program is certainly significantly less, lesser than that. We have a video that we queued up, but I'm going to quickly, uh, we're able to show that because we wanted to get some testimonials from your sheriff's department as well to see some people that are program.
While they, while they work, while they, let me clear my mind. Go ahead. Including myself. And sometimes, um, I just need somebody to bring you out or to reach down or pull you up.
Yeah, because I've been incarcerated before, so I know how I needed to get out. I don't have nothing, I had to score it over. It's actually hard because hitting them out with a fella, you can hit them with something and anything you can do with a fella, you know what I'm saying? And then the type of fella I had, I couldn't even get it in spilling, but I got mine for the rest of my life. Nothing, I, I got one charge. I think it's wrong, but you know what I'm saying? Like, um, I ain't been in trouble since 98, maybe 2023. I ain't have a ticket and it's still holding against me.
Okay, so initially, um, when participants, when I do a intake, we, it's like a foundation to me. So you have to have a driver's license or ID, a social security card, and a visa to pick, because depending on what we're going to do, if you need a job, some of those documents are going to be requested.
Seems wrong with me, but, uh, I wouldn't do it in my situation. I didn't have a car, you know, you have a job that I had, and I wouldn't be able to, to say yes to it, even if they wanted.
I don't feel like I'm made, I feel like I'm too smart to kill myself, but, uh, all right.
These, the signs are pushing them. I mean, um, they're almost like textbook signs, so you can really just stick. But I wouldn't hurt them. And the thing, I can closely got that space, it's not the kind of deal where.
No, we don't do that thing like.
When I walk out of jail, I hope I can spend more time with my grandkids, um, go to programs to help me to no longer drink, and get back on the right path with my life.
Still go back and do things I've been through, so like, back in my personal mind.
Um, it really makes their confidence go up. It's very fun to do, and they just feel, it's great to see their confidence after the process. Even in the process, they just feel hampered and, you know, really amazing.
And to get some folks that are hip, some folk in my facility that know how to talk to my staff.
And I'm just so excited about partnering with, with People Work. Uh, and I think, and I want people to know, this is, if I called the sheriff's office anything, all we had to do was open our door and allow y'all to come in and do what you did. And great things can come from this.
I'm like a doll, baby.
So that's a short bit that I kind of showed some of the work and the people who helped. I'll just, just play it off in the beginning. We operate currently in Wilson, Edgecombe, Pitt County, and Tully. So some of them are from, a little bit from all over to where participants are. But yeah, also I want to give a thank you to my staff who's stayed over late tonight to help you out with this presentation and everything, and again, to the sheriff's office as well. What questions do you all have?
Any questions?
Where are you located?
Um, our, our headquarters is in Raleigh. Uh, right now, we kind of, we, again, because we work so closely with the, with the jail here, uh, we go in and out of the jail. So our caseworkers come to. So our caseworkers come to the jail and operate that way.
How'd you say you've been in out here?
At Edgecombe County, I believe it was January? Yeah, I believe it was in January weekend.
Yeah, I think there were other programs that were funded by state federal funds that received this.
One or two of your funds. So what is, what are you asking us?
So, well, first of all, I love the chance to get a, to get a chance to meet with you all, even more outside of this, to give a full breakdown of what a pay-to-success agreement would look like. Ultimately, what I'd love is a pay-to-success agreement with Edgecombe County.
Well, certainly, Containment, Jordan, Seven.
Okay.
You know, we've got some folks up there for, it's the savings, they're interested in it.
Okay.
It's the savings throughout county, we certainly would be interested in it. We've always shown an interest in reentry, okay, and kind of been supportive where we could. So continue to talk with Ms. Evans and look at what you might be requesting of us.
Yes, sir.
If you're ready.
Also, one more point I realized I missed. The part of pay-to-success is that if we come to the end of the five years and we've not saved you all any money, it's no repayment whatsoever. So it's, again, it's all...
Well, I guess, we're going to say it's my, be some meat, baby. In terms of, when you come back and make that request, but depending upon it is, I think many of us would be thankful, okay? If you can show us where you've saved us, okay? I think, I'll say, for the, we're straight up looking at it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. We're invited to take a break up? At this time, we'll take public petitions. Is anybody here from the program would like to be, please come and stick your name and address on the public petition.
Good evening. My name is James Rian. 704 East Highway, 97 East and Lake. And the Vice President of the Things Historic Society, African American History of Edgecombe County. And on behalf of our President, Major Stith, and the members of the Things Society, I want to thank this board for continuing to support us. We had two very successful events in the spring. The premiere of a film, We Can Do Better, which highlighted the campaign just to keep IBP out of Edgecombe County. And we also unveiled a North Carolina Civil Rights Trail Marker to the East of the Citizens League here in Tarver, North Street. On this Saturday, November 11th, at 11 o'clock in Red Hill Missionary Baptist Church, we're going to be unveiling a new North Carolina Highway Historical Marker that recognizes some history that we have recovered and researched and brought out of the, brought up that has not been recognized. Of meetings of freed people in 1866 in the area of Northern Edgecombe County that where hundreds of freed black people were gathered, having meetings, trying to set up the Equal Rights League and fighting for higher wages, voting rights, and self-defense. This was during the time period, people were free from slavery, but not yet had the right to vote. And powers that be were trying to turn the clock back. And people stood up, farm workers in this county stood up and made a difference. And we're going, our program will be in Red Hill Missionary Baptist Church this Saturday, 11 o'clock. And our speaker will be Dr. Historian David Zelski. And in the past, he's around, everybody's welcome. The marker will read, Equal Rights League, Newly Freed People, 1866. Rallyed at Hammond's Hill here for voting rights, fair wages, and self-defense, became an early civil rights organization. Chairman Wiggins and Commissioner Powell will be there and hope you all be there too. Thank you.
I was saying to everybody, these are real educational meetings. If you happen to be in the area, they spell a lot of history in the county. We're not real, so I would encourage you to chant if you can. Do hand those areas, real interest in me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, again. I'm Reverend Roosevelt Hicks, and I'm here for, trying to, looking a lot of the time, case you need contact. And I'm corresponding to Post Office, Box 264, speaking on the line. I have some information I want to share with y'all. Here's some information here. I want to go to your agenda, where y'all have, Reverend the Carolina America, I just want to say, thank y'all. Thank y'all for doing an excellent job dealing with that issue. And we all hope and pray that the best will come out of it. Mr. Manager, will you pass this one? Also, on your agenda here, you have a consideration of a resolution to recognize Native American heritage. Y'all have a document that kind of show that once Edgecombe County was its herder home, how you pronounce that word, Mr. Manager?
Tuscaraw.
Tuscaraw, yes, yes. And I think this again, it's important that we don't leave out anyone who turn down to Edgecombe and Edgecombe history. Also, y'all have on your agenda tonight, a resolution in honor of Mr. Walter Tummer Jr. Mr. Walter Tummer, Princeville gave excellent service to Edgecombe County for many years and many capacity. And I stand here proud at your night to display y'all some wax. This is a record that we recorded down at Cadilla High School in the auditorium in 1970. On the directorship of Mr. Walter Tummer Jr. I was 17 years at the time, 53 years ago. But I didn't just frame one, I brought two. I want y'all to get a feel of, of not too many black high schools in the state. I'll tell you that happened in 1970.
Just want to just feel it, pass it back?
Yeah.
You want some, want some history back?
Yeah, I want my history back. And also, on this summer...
Make sure everybody, everybody feel it.
Might be some yogurt still with that.
Nobody can play it, mother, but me.
We also see on y'all's agenda, y'all have a resolution, Mr. Support Princeville with the name of the Red. We ask that y'all do that if you will. And on this summer, the 23rd, I chair here at church, y'all should have a copy of that as well. With a new age concert in honor of Mr. Tummer, he specialized with men and people in this area. And he just wanted to carry on his legacy. So at charity on this summer, the 23rd, at Green Park, we can do a Christmas concert in his arms. And y'all knows that this is another attachment I have. If you look to the back row, you see someone that you should have recognized, but that was 53 years ago. So I have changed so much since that time, but I still don't know my own. And also, I want to ask y'all to do this for the town of Princeville. This is my friend, General Hugh Shelton. Most people know General Hugh Shelton as Joint Chief of Staff. And that's what this art here kind of gives a little history. Mr. Manager, I'm going to...
This is kind of heard about?
Yeah, I should have, I should have one. I have two things. And I didn't go back and dig this up, I got this out of a Welcome to Tarver magazine. Maybe y'all in the audience knows that. But General Shelton and I, the people that are not raised up on the same farm, his family farm, but he worked on the farm just like everybody else did it. And I was telling the county manager, his grandmother was a school teacher. And his grandfather was a, what they call county auditor for Edgecombe County. As I understand it from General Shelton, years ago, they didn't refer to him as county manager. They were referred to as county auditor. And when I came to know the county, it was county manager. I think Alvin Harold was the manager at the time. And that's one part of it. I'm giving y'all another piece, but I want y'all to help promote the town of Princeville. On the back of this, if you drive to Edgecombe County, you'll see signs that say, Welcome to Edgecombe County, home of General Hugh Shelton. Some of y'all have seen those signs. If you go out along the road, Highway 42, and look towards Ringville, there's one there on the Pitt County, Edgecombe County line. And you'll also see one down in the Chris area. But what I want you all to do, the town of Princeville is a part of Edgecombe County. And I would be doing the same thing if it was the other way. But what you got, Welcome to Edgecombe County, home of General Hugh Shelton. I want you all to consider asking for a sign, go somewhere all over the county, saying, Edgecombe County, home of the oldest black town in Charlotte by blacks in America. It's a part of our history, we should be proud of it. And I also ask y'all to support that resolution, it was the one for the Native Americans. And here's a copy of the Allen cover y'all, it's a cover. I'm proud of it, very proud of it. I wish the back had been used a little bit more. But anyway, I thank y'all for y'all's time. And I'm going to done excellent out of it here because I have a bed appointment. Nine o'clock, bed appointment.
Anybody ask for public petition, please come forward. Is anybody ask for public petition? Here in Miami, moving on to Mexican Island, Ms. Evans?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have a few budget amendments for your approval and a few others for your review. I'll draw your attention to those at the front of your roofings of budget amendments there. You see budget amendment number one. As you will know, at your last meeting, you directed staff, you agreed to appropriate a million dollars of fund balance to purchase vehicles for the Sheriff's Office. This is a budget amendment to capture that. What you'll also see in that budget amendment is, we recently sold some cars that you surplus a few months ago to the tune of a little over $24,000. So this budget amendment recommends re-appropriating that money into the same capital outlay line. Also, $73,582 insurance proceeds to vehicles that were involved in an accident, sheriff's vehicles that were totaled. So those were the payoffs for those two vehicles. So recommending that we appropriate the million for that, the $24,000 for surplus vehicles sold, as well as proceeds from the, from the insurance on those two vehicles into capital outlay for purchase of vehicles for Sheriff's Office. Just as a note, that we have that out to bid now for vehicles, as well as upfit those vehicles. That was out for about three weeks, I believe it was. We only received two bids. Our procurement policy says that we have to go out a second time. The second time, we can receive only one bid and we can still proceed. That would be a contract would be brought back for your approval. Those second round of bids are due back this Thursday. Budget amendment number two is, you originally appropriated or reserved of the ARPA funds or ARPA-enabled funds, $220,000 to purchase heavy equipment in solid waste department. We purchased a new backhoe there for a little, around $180,000. The balance of that, $40,218, is remaining. And so recommending that we roll that forward to current year's capital outlay to purchase a compactor for one of our convenience sites for solid waste department. Budget amendment number three is, this is in the Health Department. This is a routine budget amendment, you see relatively small numbers there. But the reason that it is included here in the section where you must approve is because it includes moving some funds out of salary. And this is for some funding received from the state. As you'll recall, one of the provisions with our budget amendments is that anything that involves, anything that involves movement of money in or out of salary, salary-related lines, regardless of the amount, must be approved. Budget amendment number four, again, this is funding received in Healthy Communities program. Bringing this to you because this also includes appropriation or part of the budget, budget amendment includes a salary line. Budget, budget amendment four A, this is COVID enhancement funds. These are, again, state funds for the Health Department appropriating those funds to the Health Department. Budget amendment four B. There were three vehicles planned and budgeted in FY '23 budget. One for planning, one for the Health Department, one for the Tax Administration Office. We worked very hard, as you know, with limited supply of vehicles, not being able at that time to identify vehicles to purchase that were suitable for those departments. We believe we have identified those vehicles available now. So recommending that you roll forward what was previously appropriated in FY '23 in capital outlay to current year's budget. So those are the budget amendments that require your approval and have to answer any questions about those or any of the other budget amendments. So recommend that you approve it.
Any questions, Mr. Manager?
I just have a comment. I just want to thank staff and all staff for, these are the best prepared budget amendments since I've been at the Missionary that I've seen. Detailed descriptions and very minimal corrections or changes. And so just thank you for taking the time to make sure that those are done correctly. And for, it helps us as we review these.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Now, is budget amendment one through what?
Budget amendment is one through four, sorry, four B.
One through four B, is one through four B, is one through four B. Questions? All in favor, have you known my vote time, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Handing down the budget minutes, all through. Next, Mr. Evans.
Next is regarding a resolution to approve plan for Carolina merger transition. Attached where you review is a Carolina merger transition plan, which is due for submission to the North Carolina State Board of Education by November 15. You will see that the plan is in two parts detailing the respective size of the merger for each school system. A few modifications have been made since our joint meeting on October 16th. I'll point, direct your attention to those changes and or additions in just a second. All four boards are asked to consider the enclosed resolution to approve the plan and authorize its submission before the deadline on November 15th. National County Board of Commissioners met this morning, word that I got from the managers that they did approve, adopt the resolution to approve the plans as presented. I believe, school districts are meeting tonight. And so we'll hear if they will approve those. I do recommend that you approve the plan as presented, subject to some minor technical corrections that Mr. Peters and I will agree to, if there, we believe there will be a couple that staff will agree to. And I'll point out a couple of things that might be. I do want to, I want to point out that in, in your packet was a copy of the resolution for approval. There's been an update, an update to that from the copy that you had in your agenda packet. You do have an updated copy of the resolution at your place. The thing that was added since the agenda packet went out would be, if you look at the one loose at your place, it's the next to the last, whereas on the front page, states that the board, the boards have identified no remaining issues they believe cannot be resolved by continuing cooperation of the parties. I believe that, that was the addition made since the copy went out in your agenda packet. I want to point out a few things in the plan itself. Some of those would be changes from what you saw at the joint meeting back in October. Some are, were existing at the time, I just want to draw your attention. So just following through in your agenda packet, of course, the first you'll see is Edgecombe Schools' side of the transition plan. First, I want to point out, if you'll turn to page seven of Edgecombe Schools', section of the transition plan. You'll see down the second half of the page, where it's titled Preparation of Budgets and Funds, Contracts, Obligations, Assets, and Liabilities. Those bullet points there on second half of that page outlines, propose how we, in particular, how Edgecombe County will fund or will not fund certain things moving forward in the transition. I'm happy to, I don't know if you want me to read through those, but we have discussed those before, you're aware of those. But I want you to know that they now, this has now been added into the plan itself. It is also, it also... It is als- it also shows up on the Nash County, Nash County School's side of the plan as well, so it would be consistent between both sides of, of the plan. Uh, again, just to remind you, I think you, you'll remember, I want to make sure that other notes, that though there are two sides of this, this will be submitted as one plan under the umbrella of this joint resolution that all four boards are adopting either earlier today or, or tonight. Um, also on page, on the next page, uh, page eight, at the top of page eight, here are some additional points that have been added. Um, for example, you'll see at the top, it says current expense, currently allocated in Nash Public, Nash County Public Schools. Of the two-million-one-hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-dollar base current expense payment, that's what we, Edgewood County, we have been budgeting for a number of years now. We refer to that as the current expense, the base payment. Um, approximately five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of that will be remaining, uh, will be the remaining allocation to Nash County Public Schools to cover those tenth through twelfth graders. As you all will remember, just to make sure everyone here in the audience knows, that the transition will happen July of twenty-four, July of next fall. The decision has been made and agreed upon all four, uh, boards and is included in this plan, that those rising tenth through twelfth graders, excuse me, who live on the Edgewood County side of Rocky Mountain, but have been going to high school in, on, in Nash County Schools, will be given the option to continue to go to that high school, to finish out their high school career there. And therefore, we having some ongoing current expense obligation for those remaining students. At this point, and this is just estimate, you'll be given a, a more definite budget number when it comes to budget time, estimate is approximately five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of that, um, will remain to be budgeted to Nash County Schools for those students. Therefore, uh, the two-point-one-eight-eight million, approximately one-point-six million may be available to appropriate to Edgewood Public Schools. Again, we wanted to put the word "may be available" because that's still a budgetary decision that you get to make, uh, come budget time, uh, in next spring. Annual capital and debt service to Nash County Public Schools, approximately four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that either is or was going to Nash County Schools for annual capital and debt service may be available to appropriate to Edgewood Public Schools. We phrase it like that because in this current year, FY twenty-four, uh, the budget that you all approved, uh, we are paying debt service for, uh, to Nash County Schools, but we're not paying any current, uh, annual capital. So all of that, the, the total of the annual capital, debt service, and capital gap, that will be available then to appropriate to Edgewood Schools instead of Nash Schools. Uh, the plan is, as was on page seven, states that come fall of next year, we will no longer continue to pay debt service or any annual capital to Nash County Schools. And again, that's something that all four boards are, uh, we expect of bringing on tonight. Um, the last budget there says the local cost of the supplement and benefits for staff positions in the four schools will need to be accounted for, uh, by Edgewood County. Uh, so, uh, those teacher positions, there are about a hundred positions, a little over a hundred positions, um, supplement that is ten percent now in Edgewood Schools will have to apply to those as well. So we will have to budget for that in upcoming year. But again, we will have available to us those numbers that I just shared with you just a moment ago. Um, also under, uh, budget transfer process, I want to note there that it says Edgewood Public Schools will identify and address all legal and regulatory requirements and frameworks governing the transfer of assets and budgets between the school, to school districts in accordance with applicable laws, regulations, and contractual obligations. Um, so, uh, that's a broad statement, in particular, that refers to, we've had conversation about assets that were purchased, uh, with federal funds. Um, and so that is still, uh, the final number is unknown, and so this statement is included in both sides of the plan. Um, everyone at this point believes that using, instead of, uh, depreciating, depreciated value, instead of using that, using fair market value, that number is going to be much less than what was originally, uh, expected. Uh, they are still, both, uh, staff and both school systems are still working on finalizing that number. And that refers to the next point as well, under transfer, transfer and acquisition of, uh, assets. I do also want to point out, if you turn over a couple of pages to page ten, you'll see here on the, on the Edgewood Side of the Plan, the recommended school configuration. As we know, the fall of next year, those ninth grade students, uh, that formerly had gone to Nash County Schools or would have gone to Nash County School, High School, will be coming to Edgewood Schools, um, up till the last joint meeting, uh, the two options that were on the table were either send those students to North Edgewood High School, or they're considering building this called the incubator building in Fountain Park in Rocky Mountain, it's a facility that's becoming available. Um, the, the school board has decided, uh, for the time being, um, to move forward, planning to transfer those ninth graders to North Edgewood High Schools. Uh, they, they looked at just the time of preparing that incubator building, um, just not enough window of time there, and, and, and the board has decided that they, they're planning to move forward those ninth graders, uh, taking them to North Edgewood. So that is a revision, uh, in the plan. Of course, there will still be decisions to make as far as, uh, long-term, uh, when those tenth and eleventh and twelfth grade students will transfer over. I also want to point out on page twelve, uh, near the top of page twelve, really the first bullet there at the top of page twelve, there's been some question about bus, the transfer of buses as part of the assets that we'll transfer, seventy-two passenger versus the sixty-eight passenger buses, I believe, uh, sixty-five passenger buses. Edgewood Schools Garage cannot handle the longer, larger buses. Um, so you'll see here included in the plan is that Edgewood and that Schools Transportation Apartments, they're working with DPI to transfer approximately twenty, seventy-two passenger buses from Nash to another local public school unit. Then that local public school unit will then transfer the appropriate number of sixty-five passenger buses to Edgewood Schools. I also want to point out, I must admit that I was a little confused on this initially. Uh, I, I think initially there was some thought that the smaller bus meant an older bus, and that's not, not, that's not necessarily the case. They still make both-sized buses, so that does not, the, us, Edgewood Schools getting those smaller buses that mean, uh, older bus just means it's a smaller bus. Um, and so just want to make sure I'm, I made that, uh, made that point. I believe those were all of the additions or changes or things that I wanted to point out, um, in the, uh, Edgewood Schools' side of the plan. Now, on the, on the Nash side, if you keep on turning, if you turn to page eleven, I believe there are page numbers that follow them while I, yes, sir? And you'll see Nat- Nash School Plan, the one that's in your agenda packet, still has that watermark there of draft, notifying us draft, actually sent me this afternoon, uh, the final copy without that watermark. I do want to point out something that is different from the, what's in your agenda packet, and you have a copy of it at your seat. And, um, and they still, uh, here estimate that, uh, under the subheading of, uh, physical impact, approximately three-point-four million dollars of, uh, federal, uh, federal funding, local, or federal funding, um, will follow those students from Nash County Schools that to Edgewood Schools. But in, in the latest page, and this is what was adopted by Nash County Board of Commissioners, and I want you to see this because this will be a part of the plan. Um, here is where they add the language that you saw over in the Edgewood Schools' plan that talks about that same statement that reads, "ECPS and NCPS are working in collaboration with the North Line Department of Public Instruction, U.S. Department of Education to determine the reasonable fair market value of federally funded assets and how ECPS will acquire selected assets." Exact same statement that you saw over in the Edgewood School. So that was not in Nash's copy that you got, that you saw at the October meeting that I sent to you last week, but I want you to know that that has, that has been added. Um, everything else, uh, in the Nash's plan, um, is as you've seen in your agenda packet. I do want to point out, uh, on page eighteen, on page eighteen outlines their timeline for, uh, enrollment and assignment of students. Um, a- as you know, those students who live on the Edgewood County side of Rocky Mountain, but they'll be tenth through twelfth graders, will be given the option to continue going to the high school in Nash County Schools. The timeline here specifies, you'll see April of twenty-four, that they can choose, if they want to, to go ahead and move and transition on, over to Edgewood Schools. They don't have to wait. They, if they don't want to finish out where they started, they can transition on over. Um, but of course, as you know, they need to know that by a certain time so that they can make plans. So that time is April the first. So the deadline for parents of those students making that decision is April first. If you read the details of the plan, it says information will go out to every student, every household that's affected, giving them more details on the process for that, and they will be notified of that, um, actually it'll go out in January on that page before you see that goes out in January. But their deadline to make that decision, um, is, is April of.
How would they know whether they'd be transitioning to?
Um, they, they'll, they'll be told at that time. It will, I think it would depend on, you know, uh, they, they'll have some options. They'll either early college or North Edgewood. So those, uh, those are, are the main changes. Um, it, it was noted that on, on one particular page, um, that there's a correction that needs to be made, where there's a link to a file, a list of the assets that notes, uh, list of, uh, depreciated assets, so that looks to be something that needs to be corrected instead of using the word appreciation, to use fair market value. So my recommendation would be to, uh, to approve the, the plan as presented, those changes noted, resolution that you have there, and to authorize Mr. Peters and myself to agree to any minor technical corrections that need to be made. Would that be favorable to?
Any, any questions for, for Nash?
I'm assuming that it says that government can always agree with requests, when you question, when you already questioned. In other words, it's not open to shit if you're complaining about work, you're done with work.
That, that's right. I mean, the, the plan itself describes the plan for transition students and assets. You, there are still decisions, uh, you know, to be made on several things. Um, and, and for, for you in particular, there's budgetary decisions that, that are yet to be made.
That was my concern. Shouldn't be signed something we don't believe in. The government signed it, especially the federally funded equipment, you know, over something like nine-hundred-thousand dollars going into this, who's going to decide a fair market value. I'd really like to feel like to know, um, they could come up with anything if we've already signed it. That's why I'm concerned, and we have the language correct to make sure that that doesn't happen.
And Mr. Peters, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, you approving this does not appropriate, obligate you appropriate any funds from this, for anything, e- even including for, for those, those federal assets.
Did you ask about that subsequent question?
Yes, I, I did ask that one. I'm there looking to that question.
Oh, one other question. In reading the state budget, I noticed two million dollars set aside for you, Nash County, for demerger. I wanted, can you give me an explanation of it and where did I miss Edgewood on that?
That's a good question. Someone pointed that out to me. I can't tell you how they got two million and we did.
I know how they got it. I mean, one of the, I don't know how people on that side of the question why they got it, why Edgewood didn't get it. It's going to cost us money just like it's going to cost them money in this merger. So it concerned me that our electeds in Raleigh didn't see that when the budget went through, I need to question it.
Well, I, I don't think any of this is, it's probably the question, we're not, we were not there, and I believe that they were questioning it, and maybe attempted to get it for us, uh, it just helped with the problem to get it. Uh, it boils down to, I guess, you know, something, uh, who had to look out to hit it from the, the powers that be. And Raleigh, I think that's really what happened to this. And, and I think I would, I think I would represent to make some strong efforts to get all the money that they could to support this effort, at least to contact, I was having it, and, and sometimes not necessarily public conversation, uh, they just can't get it. And I, and I believe that it's back to the question, but there's still some unanswered, some, some unanswered questions in this, uh, in this document. We don't have, um, unless, every, representatives from, uh, so, so Chilis's office, or representative Leonard Davis, in terms of, uh, seeing if we, just whatever we might owe, or have, in the obligation we might have, uh, to see if they can work on some favors, uh, from, from the department, the other department, if they can, if they can wave up that, and we gotta, we just need to, so that we've not heard back from them yet, but we definitely
Just a couple of things. Whenever I, I don't, if I approve something or give an nay, I always like to give some context without having to say it. So, um, I, what, here, and it's kind of what everyone else has said here, is this document, the Edgewood County side is very big. If, if you look at these words, it's, "To determine fiscal availability, we will engage in discussions. We will engage in discussions. We will determine. We will work alongside. When, and the difference in pay scales, we will determine." We, we're voting on something, we're, we're approving a document that has not been determined. We have no answer to what is determined. So we're, we're voting on something, and then the things that they've determined, in our school demerger plan for bus coordinators, we are appropriating four bus coordinators for Tarboro, North South, and Rocky Mountain. So in our demerger plan, or our merger plans, excuse my language, is, um, we are now organizing bus coordinators throughout the county as opposed to just the merger. And then in this, this is the first time this has been brought up. We're going to build a bus storage and maintenance facility, but we don't have the ability to service seventy-two passenger buses. And our document says we're getting sixty-five passenger buses, and Nash County's document it says we're getting sixty-six passenger buses.
Probably, I don't think that's something.
I, I understand that, but we're voting to approve it, manager recommended to approve the document that we're saying has errors.
Well, um, I'm starting with a real thing, but, um, if we do nothing, uh, we got a merger coming, okay? That's mandated, like the general says. I think with this plan, uh, and a majority of, all of this effort is planned, is the school board, is the school board issue, board, county commissioners, I think the things that we have to do. So once it's mandated, we got to fund it there, to a level that we can fund it. So it's coming at us anyway, regardless of what it's, but we can do no plan and send nothing back, and we got a merger that's coming at us next year. So I think that, I think, I guess we can call it a living document in terms of, we really don't know how many students, uh, will send the, uh, tenth that will be, that will be staying. So the school board really can't give us figures until they get the actual number of students that will be staying, and that kind of, remember those students like South Bay, and those rising seniors and juniors like South Bay, might decide to go to Edgewood Schools. So I think that's one of the reasons that, 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 that the things are being driven like the deal, but, you know, I, I think that a lot of what we're talking about, the school board. I, I think that a lot of what we're talking about, the school board, in terms of the things that we're respecting.
I find this reflects back to my question, Mr. Peters, that the language in this has been used enough that any kind of discreet information works.
Yes, sir. I, I, you know, I think for more context, I don't think the plan was intended to answer every question and allocate every dollar. The plan is put together, you know, in accordance with the session law, which was to be done by the school board, in consultation with the county, and submitted under the number fifteen. And if it's not submitted under the number fifteen, the state will come on. You know, and all these meetings we've had last year, I, all four boards and staff have worked together very well, and I think the understanding has been to get the best we can do with this plan, knowing that it will answer every question, and there will be more questions arising next year. And, and it, you know, it does not prevent Nash County and the local schools to, on that fellow's front, it's, it's, it's obvious she did everything, obviously, and they paid a lot of hard work, so I know that it's an answer, but it's the help from the state and the government.
I wanted all that resolved before I signed it. That was my problem. I wanted all that resolved. I think that was the problem.
About money, how, how are we going to appropriate money for what we don't think we can afford? We appropriate, I think we appropriate work, we want to do a house. That's, if we appropriate work, we want to do a house. The bottom line is, we're gonna, we're gonna have to appropriate what's gonna be in our school system. Bottom line is, we can, all this we want to, be our school system, be with our children, whether we send any plan, beginning on July of next year, these school systems will be there.
Great sport, Nash County, two million dollars, we'd have to be.
What the General Assembly did there, you know, that was out of our hands, in terms of the general, the general kind of profession. We had no entitlement to that. And that's a political response to politicians that have the power to do that. I, I would say that our people could have asked for it, we don't know. They did get us some money for this, and they got us for what, I believe what they could.
We got fourteen million, fourteen point two million dollars for Kingsborough, so.
I bring you everything you said, but I thought I'd like to know a question, whatever you have to say.
But we need to have money we don't have, and we want.
But we don't know that we need any of it. I just felt like it was.
Unless they would give it to us. Unless they would give it to us. Any other questions about, do we need two million dollars, state will give us two million? We're looking, we're asking, we're asking the state, we're asking the state for money, and now we're asking Congress for money, who have no votes. Any other questions, or? Chair moves to adopt the, the plan?
Sir?
Questions? All in favor, let me know by the motion, aye. Let me know by raising the right hand. All opposed? Most of the pass by two. Next.
Next item on your agenda.
Consider a resolution?
To recognize Native American heritage.
Do I actually read that resolution, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to stand and vote.
Please. This is hard to find. Let's see if we can name a rock though. Just to have him read that as a moment.
So it's my honor to stand here at this podium tonight, where I normally sit a little bit closer to you. I am a proud member of the Hallowaspona tribe. We're primarily residing in a little community called Holliston, North Carolina, southwest corner of Halifax County and Warren County. We are below four thousand members to our tribe. I believe I'm one of only two county managers, Native American county managers in the state, one of your few Native American employees here at Edgewcombe County. So it's my honor to stand here, not only because of that, but also because of the rich history that many people here in Edgewcombe County don't realize that we have here in our great county. And so we want to recognize that tonight by this resolution, and I'll read it as you have it in your packet. Whereas the Edgewcombe County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the rich and diverse history, cultural heritage that has shaped our county, and whereas North Carolina is home to a significant Native American population with historical roots that extend back millennia, and it boasts the largest Native American population east of Mississippi. Whereas Edgewcombe County is steep in Native American history, and it was once heavily populated by multiple Native American tribes, the prominent, most prominent being the Tuscarora Nation. And whereas Native Americans have made and continue to make significant contributions to the social, economic, cultural, and political life of our state and nation, and whereas November has been designated nationally as Native American Heritage Month to recognize and celebrate the rich cultural traditions, contributions, and history of Native American peoples, and whereas it is essential to promote awareness and understanding of the unique heritage, traditions, and challenges faced by Native Americans throughout our nation and indigenous people all around the world. Now, therefore being resolved, that the Edgewcombe County Board of Commissioners officially recognizes the month of November as Native American Heritage Month in Edgewcombe County, North Carolina, this sixth day of November twenty-twenty.
Motion. Question. All in favor, let me know by the motion, aye. All opposed? The resolution is passed.
I do want to point out, thank you for that so much. I do want to point out that Reverend Higgs, this that you have at your place, he brought this tonight, and he's, he, he's very knowledgeable of the history of this county, including history of native people here in the campus. So just wanted to recognize him for providing that. Item eight is regarding Edgewcombe Community College easement agreement. You see, the city of Rocky Mountain is requesting a utility easement on property used by Edgewcombe Community College at their Rocky Mountain campus. The proposed easement is on a section of the campus that the county owns and leases for the biotech training center. The easement agreement and related maps are attached. I do want to note that the college has already approved this easement for the portion of the property that they own that this easement will cross. I recommend that you approve the enclosed easement agreement as presented.
Motion. Do you have any questions? All in favor, let me know by the motion, aye. All opposed, here and now, this is approved. Second question. All in favor, let me know by the motion, aye. All opposed, here and now, this is approved. Second question. All in favor, let me know by the motion, aye. All opposed, here and now, this is approved.
Item F, as you know, we have been in discussion with Nash County for some time regarding the sale of Edgewcombe County's forty-five percent interest in a former Edgewcombe-Nash mental health building property located at five hundred Nash Medical Arts Mall in Rocky Mountain, Nash County. Nash County owns the remaining fifty-five percent of the property. We have come to a negotiated agreement for the sale of the county's interest in the property, where Nash County is willing to pay two point two million dollars for Edgewcombe County's forty-five percent interest in the property. The current tax value of the property is four million eight hundred and thirty-two thousand and seventy dollars. Thus forty-five percent of the current tax value is two million one hundred and seventy-four thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars. County attorney Michael Peters and I feel that two point two million is a reasonable and appropriate sales price considering the tax value of the property. Our not having a need to own the property and the nature of the county's interest limits its value. For historical context, in nineteen ninety-one, Edgewcombe County financed nine hundred and forty-five thousand for its portion of construction of the building on this property. Therefore, I recommend that you approve the sale of our interest in the building located at five hundred Nash Medical Arts Mall in Rocky Mountain, and authorize Chairman Wiggins to execute the deed and related documents.
Motion. Question. All in favor, let me know by the motion, aye. All opposed, here and now, this is approved. Next, Mr. Chairman.
Next is regarding a request for the naming of the Tar River Bridge. I received a request from Dr. Glenda Knight on behalf of the Principal Board of Commissioners requesting your support for the naming of the Tar River Bridge between Princeville and Tarboro in honor of the late Mr. Walter Plymouth. A copy of the request is included. This request ultimately must be approved by the NC Transportation Board, but they ask for the support of the local governing body. If you would like to support the request, I will then work with Dr. Knight to submit the application, that must be first reviewed by NC DOT staff. If it meets their requirements, I will prepare a resolution for you to consider, which will accompany the application before the Transportation Board. If the board chooses to support this request, I will notify the town of Tarboro, so their board will be aware this request is being submitted.
Question. All in favor, let me know by the motion, aye. All opposed, here and now, this is approved. Next.
Next is regarding a cell tower lease. As you were made aware at your last meeting, City Switch LLC is proposing to lease property from the county in order to construct and maintain a communications tower. The tower will be located next to the Kingsborough Water Tower. Proposed lease is for eight hundred and fifty dollars per month for an initial term of ten years, with the option to renew for three additional five-year periods. The proposed tower does not meet the setback requirements of our Unified Development Orders. City Switch LLC has applied to appear before our Board of Adjustments to get a variance. I recommend that you approve the lease agreement. Construction of the tower will be subject, subject to the approval of the variance from the Board of Adjustment. I, I do want to acknowledge that, I believe we have representative, representatives here from Edgewcombe Martin Electric Membership Corporation, and perhaps a representative for Canban Logistics. They are joining property owners, and I believe may want to speak on this matter, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody here to speak, please come, come over here. Do you have a representative of the tower, of the applicant here?
Thank you for the opportunity. Winston House, CEO of Edgewcombe Marketing, one of the opportunity to speak in opposition of the tower that City Switch has proposed. A little history here, as Eric had already mentioned, there was a proposal last year for them to locate the tower just south of the tracks next to the Canban facility, and that was denied by the planning and adjustments board because the offsets were not in place to meet the requirements at the time. The new proposed site puts it between the county's water tower and our electric substation, which, as you can imagine, is a critical piece of infrastructure that we serve, used to serve around a thousand of our members in Edgewcombe County. We serve approximately twelve thousand, twelve thousand members across Edgewcombe Martin's system. The location that is proposed for the new tower will put it within a hundred foot of major distribution lines coming out of our station. We serve several key accounts out of that station. If you remember, we served the QBC facility out of there. We now serve RQ and Investments out of there, and several others that are looking to locate. Further importance is all the attention that we continue to get from requests here in the county, projects looking at the mega site, one of the top mega sites in the state, not the country, and there could be future expansion needs for that station. So we have great concerns, safety and reliability are key to what we do, and we certainly want to make sure that we protect the interest of our members and that station. It's about a twelve million dollar investment we have there, and we want to make sure that we can continue to provide safe and reliable power to our members. We understand that City Switch has stated this tower is engineered to fall within its footprint if something were to happen. We understand that, can appreciate that, with an airline of work, we engineer and design a lot of things in our system, but they don't always work as they're engineered, and that's just how things happen sometimes. We also understand the catastrophic type of weather events that we experience here in our county, the very familiar tornadoes that we experienced here just a few months ago, the damage it caused. So I, again, we have some, some very great concerns about locating almost a three hundred foot tower that close to our substation, and the risk that it could impose on our members and our infrastructure, and I certainly hope you will take that into consideration in approving a lease agreement when it doesn't even meet the setback requirements that the commission has already put in place.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
I'm receiving comments like this, concerning what's there, how urgent is this thing? Well, for us, it's not urgent to that company, they were probably saying that it is, but it doesn't.
Well, I'm just, I've got some questions about, nothing, nothing about, particularly about this gentleman, but anybody coming there, and where the location is, and the relationship, everything else. And we put all of our eggs in the basket at Kingsborough, and we want to do anything for, and if anybody or anybody in the future is, actually, information on exactly what has to be done, what should be done, and what is a good place to put, could we have any other plans? And then we want that place.
Well, I'll let Mr. Peters follow up. He's had more direct conversation with him, but I think based on the area that they're trying to serve, they have a fairly tight window where they want to locate this tower. Because we did, you know, we presented that, that.
It's interesting, they do, apparently have a tight, and then they advise us that they get the request, City Switch gets a request from the provider, and that provider gives them, we want a tower in this particular radius. This is their house, and their original application last year were south of the railroad hills, within the CSX right of way, so that south bus corner of the intersection, directly south of this particular location. And that, I mean, if you get that variant that comes back from county, interested in this location, they also propose a location on the northeast side of that intersection, further down, which is along the railroad, the right of way of what we call the June Long Track, a lot across from QBC, that is the location to look at. That location would be within the right of way, with nothing near, that it would be a few hazards in future if they're not developing. But I love to be proposed, further east, about a mile from the intersection with QBC railroad track, to where there is a current unit, some team, and power, and the canyon is a lot, that's sort of a landlock. They told us that that location is too far away from their target area. We got through conversations recently with QBC, and they proposed, going in directly behind the PBC property, and were told the same thing, that that was too far away. So apparently, the radius, the target area they're looking at is very narrow. So that's what they, we, we did, you know, from our perspective, other locations, but they kept coming back to this, very tight, and that.
So all three, we have water tower beside it, that should be of concern, about a tower falling on our water tower. EMC has expressed that supply at that station right now is about a thousand people, should be of concern about it falling on there, and taking a tower out for a thousand people, plus the expansion need with having to go over four hundred megawatts for some of these projects that we're looking at. They're obviously gonna have to expand that mega, that substation. So that's the natural area that they have to expand anyway, and the other property owner, private property owner, Canban, has expressed concern about the tower being stopped. So everyone around them has expressed concern about it.
May I ask a question? May I ask, Mr. Tolson, and Mr. Park, you know, we rely on you guys quite a deal. Some question here, do, do we want a, a tower placed in a place that we're trying to develop big time? And I don't mean to put you guys on the spot.
You just did.
I had to introduce Ralph Dawson to my staff today. I kept saying, we don't have anybody named Dawson on the. You know, so, hey, I didn't know about this tower until today, but all the arguments against this tower I heard tonight, I completely support. We are going to have to expand the, the electric capacity at that particular, and if it impinges on the current site that Winston just described to you, then I strongly oppose this, this tower. And a three hundred foot tower out there, where I think you talked about putting that tower, it may not be very acceptable to our clients that see it. So unfortunately, I understand that these people may need a tower, but we don't want to also mess up a twenty-two hundred acre mega site.
And to, to that point, Mr. Chairman, if I could say, first of all, I think, I think this discussion is important, because you all have very difficult decisions to make, you need to be as well informed as you can. Sometimes these decisions are not clear-cut. The recommend- The recommendation I'm bringing to you, and I believe Mr. Peters and I agree on this recommendation, it's not easy for us, we have to balance out all of these things. Part of the reason that we're making this recommendation is Mr. Peters mentioned, if you imagine if you're standing facing north, railroad track in front of you, Canban to your left, water tower here just in front of you diagonally, and then this land here over to your right, that's the long track, very valuable track. This, uh, the, this particular company, right now, other than what they originally tried to present, which was not approved, they're interested in either what we're proposing tonight, or just east of Kingsborough Road, along the right of way of the railroad, and that just, it will be south of that long track. Our concern was, we want to try to steer it away from that, because, as Mr. Peters mentioned, there was considering something in the right of way, not land that we own, so as far, they would need no lease agreement for us. They would still have to go back to the, the Board of Adjustments for that variance, but there's a possibility that the Board of Adjustments may would approve that. We do, absolutely do not want a tower north of the railroad track and east of Kingsborough Road, because at some point, Norris and Bob and I, we may bring a project in, and that project say, I need a rail spur off CSX railroad, and that tower's in the way. It makes sense to me that if you're gonna, if, if there's a possibility that tower's gonna be erected within that vicinity, to put it within the footprint of other utilities. And I totally understand the concern of that falling, we have to rely on, uh, recommendation information given to us by engineers, we do that all the time in, in other projects. And so, uh, I do also, to the point that Edgewood Martin would not have room to expand, uh, if you're looking at your, uh, the, the map in your agenda packet, uh, where you see the, the proposed, uh, site, you'll see in the, the blue area, that's the property that the county owns, to the right of that, that round circle, that's the tower. Uh, to the left of that, you know, that square box there, that's the property that EMC's, uh, substation is on. You can see behind that, that's land, it's, it's covered in trees right now, that's land that the county owns, that they could potentially expand in that direction. So I say, I put all of this on the table to weigh, because, you know, I, I, I'm not making this recommendation just because this company came and asked for it, we talked through all of these things. Certainly, I just want to clarify that position, my recommendation to you, uh, certainly I understand it's not an easy decision to make, um, and, and have to support, we will support whatever decision that you make.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I, I, this is the first I've heard of this, I want the urgency on the cell tower.
Well, this company wants to build it, and they, they want to build it as soon as they can, if they can get it.
And what, why, why, why they, if they just, is there a demand for the services tower is going to provide for some of that?
Well, I guess we depend on, as we do others, um, evidently, their market research has determined that, and I think we do need cell tower, additional towers in the area for reception at our, so, um, uh, uh, you know, we look at, I look at, um, staff recommendations when they come, as they, as I do for you. When you bring recommendations to this, and we depend on what you say, okay? So, my motion is to approve.
Can I make a comment? So, so now we've had our economic developer say...
Excuse me, excuse me, just a minute. My motion fails, but I would say, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, we got a comment from our economic developer, that he, he either wants to see more about it, or needs to deny outright, and he's not been involved in the conversation. So we talked about the extension, and that's why we didn't involve our technology.
He's not usually involved in what comes to his, you know, commissioner involved, and he come, he's not usually involved in commission decision, except for his economic development. He was invited, and I'm not saying, you know, my, my motion approved failed, so that's, that's gone, okay? So it's up to the board in terms of, uh, what they want to...
Aye.
Is there any motion to come, or...
Our version that we do not approve.
No, sir. The motions are not approved, and as a seventh, all, all in favor, that it be known by a motion of aye?
Aye.
All opposed? One, one position most fair. Next.